Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande Council Meeting. We call the meeting to order. First, order of business, we will combine with the invocation and the pledge. So, tonight, we have Elder Jim Smith from the Cavalry Chapel Church, and then please remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear God, our Heavenly Father, before this meeting begins, I want to bow our hearts and our heads before you and humbly acknowledge that you are the all-knowing, all-wise, and the only true God. We say thank you for the City of Casa Grande. Thank you for Mayor McFarland and each member of the council. Also, thank you for the economic growth, the population growth that we are experiencing. We lift up tonight's meeting, and I ask that you would give us wisdom to each of those who are here. We pray that Casa Grande would flourish. We pray that Casa Grande would always be a place where freedom would be valued, where there would be healthy families, strong marriages, great local businesses, and a wonderful community of faith. We give you all the honor and glory, and we pray all this in the name of Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Anthony. The roll call show that all members of the council are present. Next item is item C, our minutes.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve of minutes of council regular meeting of June 3, 2024, and accept the minutes of the Arts and Culture Commission meeting of May 7, 2024, and accept the minutes of the Youth Commission meeting of April 6, 2024.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Next item is item D, Claims Against the City.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated May 29, 2024 through June 11, 2024 as presented.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council? Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council? Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, one abstention. Rest approval. Meeting agenda tonight, any changes, Larry?
We've got no changes.
Adjustments, anything from council?
Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
So moved.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'd say mayor.
All right, congratulations, and thank you, Peaches, again for stepping up. Next is K, which is our ordinances resolutions, and we'll consider item K1.
Mayor and members of the council, this item is to be considered for establishing the primary property tax rate for fiscal year 2025 at .9643 and a secondary property tax rate at .3790. On June 3, Mayor and council held public hearings on the budget and the primary and secondary property tax rates. Primary property taxes are collected for to be used within the general fund for operational purposes, and secondary property taxes are utilized to pay voter-authorized general obligation bond debt. Based on the current net assessed valuations, the proposed primary property tax rate of .9643 will raise a tax levy of approximately
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next is the call to the public. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. I'll open the floor. If there's anybody here, I do have one speaker card, so I'll call that person. If you do approach the podium, please represent or say your name and your address for us for our records, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Also, as a reminder, this, these are not necessarily an agendized item, so if it's not on the agenda, we, we can't have any further discussion on it. Is there anybody here? I do have one, Greg Loper. Greg, did you want to?
One of the agenda items. I think he's listed one of the agenda items.
He is. And as the applicant for the agenda, we can allow you to speak on that?
It should. I probably didn't fill it out correctly. I apologize for that. It should have noted Agenda Item L2.
It does.
And that was the one I was here to speak on, if we'd be for that, not for this.
Then you can sit down.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Is there anyone else here to address the council? Okay. All right, then I'll close the floor, and we will move to our Ward of Contracts, which is I1.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve an agreement with Allison Mills Contracting LLC to perform work on our Rapid Response Intersection Improvements project. As you recall, during the budget process, we identified a number of projects that we were going to try and accomplish in very short order that would help improve the function of those intersections throughout town. And this is the first four intersections that we're attacking because we're able to get this work started in a very short period of time and hopefully complete these projects prior to the start of school. So these four intersections include the intersection of Peert and Cottonwood, or excuse me, Peert and Cortson, Florence Boulevard and Peert Road, Cottonwood Lane, Trickle Road, and Penal Avenue and Cortson Road. I just want to note that the Peert Road and Cortson Road, that intersection has gotten quite a bit of publicity, especially that right-hand turn lane to southbound Peert Movement that was conditioned for a project that was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Our project does not include that portion of improvements because we have right-of-way and utility issues that we have to get clearance on before we can move forward with that leg of the project. So I just wanted to note that. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We'll take care of that left-turn lane, though, going north on Cortson.
Yes, left turn going north.
I mean, on Peert, I'm sorry.
Northbound going west, and then southbound going east.
Okay, great. Thanks, Kevin. Anybody else have any questions? Thanks for jumping on this quickly.
Yes.
All right. Seeing none, then, I will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3429. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Allison Mills Contracting LLC for job order construction services for various intersection improvements, authorizing expenditure public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Allison Mills Contracting LLC.
Mayor McFarland, I move that we approve ordinance number 3429 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next item on our agenda is J., which is our Boards and Commissions. We do have a reappointment of Peaches Flores to the Historic Preservation Commission. Just want to give a shout out to Peaches and thank her for volunteering to be a part of this organization. If anyone in this room is interested in participating in any of our boards and commissions, if you sign up for alerts from the city on our website, it will let you know when there are opportunities, so you don't have to check the website every day. It will, it will communicate to you. So I'd recommend, if anybody is interested, go ahead and take a look there, and we do appreciate our citizens stepping up and helping us out with all of our boards and commissions. So again, thank you to Peaches. I'd entertain a motion to approve her reappointment.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, congratulations, and thank you, Peaches, again, for stepping up. Next is K., which is our ordinances resolutions, and we'll consider item K1.
Mayor and members of the council, this item is to be considered for establishing the primary property tax rate for fiscal year 2025 at .9643 and a secondary property tax rate at .3790. On June 3rd, mayor and council held public hearings on the budget and the primary and secondary property tax rates. Primary property taxes are collected for, to be used within the general fund for operational purposes, and secondary property taxes are utilized to pay voter-authorized general obligation bond debt. Based on the current net assessed valuations, the proposed primary property tax rate of .9643 will raise a tax levy of approximately $5,878,352, and the secondary proposed tax rate of .3790 will raise a levy of approximately $1,941,155. If these property tax rates are approved and adopted, any adjustments necessary as required by the county, they may also adjust the levy for those amounts. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Brenda, so on the, on the, on a primary tax rate, that, the rate, the ad valorem rate stays the same, right?
Correct.
It did not go up?
We did not raise the.
And then on the, on the secondary, that actually went down?
That one actually went down.
Okay.
So the total tax rate's down?
So the total tax rate is down?
Down.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions on the council? Okay. All right, seeing none, I'd entertain an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3430. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, levying upon the assessed valuation of the property within the city of Casa Grande, subject to taxation a certain sum upon each $100 evaluation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget, less the amount estimated to be received from fines, licenses, and other sources of revenue, providing funds for the various bond redemptions for the purpose of paying interest upon bonded indebtedness, and providing a general fund for general municipal expenses, all for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2025.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 3430 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next is item K2. This is Resolution Number 5657 regarding our consolidated fee schedules.
Mayor and council, this item is to consider the approval of the fiscal year 2425 consolidated fee schedule to be effective July 1st of 2024. Prior to consideration by council, the consolidated fees were posted for more than 60 days on the city's website as required by Arizona revised statutes. Notice of intent related to the consolidated fee schedule was also posted on the city's website's social media at least 15 days prior to considering the adoption. Departments and divisions with changes and requested changes were all involved throughout the budget process in determining the rates that have been presented and posted. In addition, the proposed resolution would grant explicit authority to the city manager to allow for temporary reduction of rates under certain circumstances and to expressly grant authorization for the city to provide for promotional and marketing rates. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Thank you, Brenda. All right, seeing no questions, then I'll call for Resolution Number, please, Gloria.
Resolution Number 5657. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, declaring as a public record and adopting that certain document filed with the city clerk and entitled FY 2024 through 25 Consolidated Fee Schedule, effective July 1st, 2024, authorizing the city manager to provide for the reduction of rates and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve, approve Resolution Number 5657 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, move to item L. This is our public meetings, public hearings. Item L1 is the first item on this part of the agenda. This is zoning ordinance number 1178.453. Jaclyn? You get to do all of them tonight?
Yep, it's my show tonight.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. First item is for DSA 230075, absolute planned area development. The site is located on Hila Bend Highway, just east of Schultz, near the underpass. It's approximately six acres, and the request is for zone change from B4 and I2 to a planned area development for commercial and light industrial mixed-use development. The new development will be a new office and showroom for absolute construction, as well as to incorporate a mixture of commercial and light industrial uses within the site. Regarding the Planned Area Development Review Criteria, here's a list of criteria covered in the staff report. I'll be covering the two highlighted items. So for this criteria, it really looks at compatibility with the surrounding land uses. The property is comprised of undeveloped land. This was previously the site of the Sunset Court Development that has since been demolished. There's an existing mobile home park to the west. The UPPR rail line runs along the north and northeast boundary of the site, and other developments in the area include recent development buildings for CPS located south of, south of the site, along Main Avenue. Looking at the review criteria, per the zoning ordinance, PADS can establish their own setbacks. So here are the setbacks that are looking at, along with the building height of 35 feet. We are also including a 15-foot landscape buffer between the residentially zoned or used property to the west. Regarding notification efforts, staff and applicant met all the requirements, and I have not received any comments or inquiries to date. At the May 2nd Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5-0 to forward to city council recommendation of approval of DSA 230075, zone change request from B4 and I2 to PAD for mixed-use commercial and light industrial development with the following conditions of approval. Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Well, my comment is, thank goodness we'll get some, something built in there, because that's, that's been kind of an eyesore for a long time. Be nice to see something go in there. Matt?
Yeah, someone who drives by there every day will be very happy to see something. And Absolute Construction always does a very good job with their projects, local, local company. And after we just had the beautiful overpass re-done by the Arts and Culture Commission out there, is it Arts and Culture? Yes. So it's just another way that we're getting that gateway going and spreading it, see? When you build it, it keeps working, so.
He's going.
Yep.
Just a question, Jackie. I know there wasn't there one comment where someone came to the planning commission and was concerned about getting in and out of that property? Was there one person maybe at the zoning commission? I thought it was this one, no?
It may have been. But yeah, that will be covered through the major site plan, app, review, looking at the driveways and access.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else, any other comments or questions from the council? All right, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing to anyone who would like to address this item L1. Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and we will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.453. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from community service and general industrial to planned area development on property located generally 300 feet east of Schultz Street on Hila Bend Highway, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.453 as presented. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next item on our agenda is L2. This is again, a public hearing, and this is considering approval of Resolution Number Jaclyn?
So before I get started on this application, this is the first of three major general plan amendments. I just wanted to give the council a little background on these. So if you recall, major general plans were done once per year. However, under new state law, they can be done more frequently, and about two years ago, the city adopted policy to hold these every two year, or twice a year, excuse me. So this is the first set for 2024.
Next set would probably be end of December.
Yeah, it'll be the, the second meeting in December, if we have any applications. So this is a request for a major general plan to amend the land use category from neighborhoods to community corridor. It's to amend approximately 70 acres, and it's located on the southeast corner of Thornton and Cottonwood. The applicant is requesting to modify a portion of the site to community corridor to allow for commercial and multifamily development. Here's the general plan review criteria that's covered in the staff report. All criteria has been evaluated and covered within the staff report, and staff finds that all criteria have been met. With regard to notification efforts per city code and ARS, there is a 60-day review period by applicable government officials and agencies, which were sent out in January. Notices were mailed out to property owners, as well as two public hearings for Planning and Zoning Commission, also per ARS requirements. The first meeting was held in April at the Community Rec Center. Second meeting was held in May, here in City Hall. Notification efforts was published in the dispatch, as well as signs posted on the site, and I have not received any inquiries or comments regarding this request. So with that, at the May 2nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for DSA 24001, major general plan amendment to amend the land use category from neighborhoods to community corridor for approximately 70 acres of land generally located out the southeast corner of Thornton and Cottonwood. Happy to answer any questions.
I just, can maybe remind us what can go in the community corridor? It can be multi-mixed use, right? So business and residential potentially?
Yeah, so with the neighborhoods land use category, it'll, it limits multifamily to, to 20% within a half mile. And so as you can see, there's no other neighborhoods within a half mile of this site, so it's limiting this, the amount of commercial and multifamily in the site.
Okay, but even in the community corridor, there could be?
Yeah, and the community corridor allows for multifamily, PADS with R medium to high density, as well as a range of commercial uses.
Okay, because that's, because that's a pretty busy corridor there. Trickle, Thornton is busy, and of course, then you've got the rail line to the south there, so.
Yeah, so it will act as a, as a good buffer for the neighborhood, single-family development.
Okay.
It's a good place for that.
Yeah. Any questions from anybody else? Yeah, Bob?
Jaclyn, do you know the history on this property? Because it seems to me like two, three years ago.
Four times.
This is maybe the fourth time.
That we've had similar discussion about splitting.
Do you know how many times it's been?
With.
Yes, so it was originally in manufacturing industry, and about, I believe, two years ago, it was a request to change to neighborhoods for the whole site, and.
Well, it has water, too, right?
Yes, it does have certificates of assured water.
So this is actually not a bad use, it's a good use for it, versus it being industrial.
Okay.
Because if it's industrial, then the certificates go to waste.
I remember a lot of, lot of discussion on the business industrial side of it.
Right.
Having proper setback in easements and landscaping.
Yeah, that was one before this last one.
So it is currently zoned for industrial uses, so the next step would be for PAD to change the zoning for the site.
So we'll change the land use first, and then we'll change the zoning.
Okay. Okay.
And the applicant is here to answer any additional questions.
Yeah, he actually, Greg. Yeah, he's L2.
L2.
Oh, I'm not on L2. Never mind. Is it, this is L2?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the right one. Sorry, Greg, I'm gonna mess you all up.
It's a little bit of deja vu, but my name is Greg Loper, address at 22575 West Mojave Street in Buckeye. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Tarantini family. Most of you know Gino. He's, his family has had this for nearly 50 years. Also with me tonight is Danny Court with Elliott Poliquin Associates, very well-renowned economic expert, if you will. They do a lot of economic development-type research. They do a lot of housing needs assessment. In fact, they were involved in the last general plan amendment that the city did. They actually hired Elliott Poliquin, and I think Danny was involved in that himself, and they're involved in that stuff around the country. And you're right, there's been a number of changes to this over the years. I've been involved in this project off and on for about 20 years. Had they kept me the entire time involved, there wouldn't have been as many changes to kind of go with that. In all seriousness, I'd be happy to answer any questions. As Jaclyn mentioned, it is zoned industrial. We did submit for a PAD prior to coming forward to the general plan amendment. Should this be approved, we'll be amending that application to correct the, you know, the correct acreage and the land uses. We're excited about this project. As you mentioned, it's a good buffer in transition of uses, and as also was mentioned, we have a certificate of assured water supply for 300 and some odd units in the high 300s. I think it's 373, and that's a distinct advantage right now for our property, and we're looking forward to coming forward with some, some development. With that, I do have a presentation, but I don't know that it'd be needed, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Greg. Questions for the applicant?
No.
No. Thank you.
Love to see something happen here. All right. All right, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing to anybody else here present tonight who would like to address this issue, item L2. All right, seeing none, then I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll call for a Resolution Number, please. Gloria?
Resolution Number 5273.28. A resolution of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending the city of Casa Grande 2030 general plan adopted by Resolution Number 5273 by amending the land use designation from neighborhoods to community corridor on property generally located at the southeast corner of Thornton Road in Cottonwood Lane, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, a move of approval of Resolution Number 5273.28 as presented.
Second.
Mayor, prior to taking the vote, as Jaclyn said, these are our major general plans. We don't do them very often, once to twice a year. They do have a different vote requirement, and it will take five votes in order to approve any major general plan tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. All right, we have a resolution, well, I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, we'll move to item L3, our next general plan amendment. This is Resolution Number 5273.29. Jaclyn?
This is a request from Ivoco Electric for a major general plan amendment to amend the land use category from neighborhoods to manufacturing and industry, to allow for mining operations on approximately 2,898 acres. The site is generally located north of Hila Bend Highway between Montgomery and Russell Road. They are also including, or excluding, I should say, 40 acres will stay in neighborhoods. This lies in the floodplain, and it will stay, will act as open space and conservation area for bull, burrowing owls. Again, here is the general plan review criteria that, and all the criteria has been av-. Again, here is the general plan review criteria that, and all the criteria has been evaluated and covered within the staff report, and staff finds that all criteria have been met. Regarding publication notifications, as similar to the last one, met all the requirements by staff and applicant, and I have not received any inquiries regarding this project. And then at the May 2nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted 5-0 to forward to city council a recommendation to approve the major general plan amendment for land, to amend the land use category from neighborhoods to manufacturing and industry for approximately 2,898 acres. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? This is Ivanhoe Electric's mine site.
And the applicant is here as well to answer any questions.
Yeah, and it's all primary, well, most of it's underground. So in fact, all the mining is underground. Does anybody have any questions of the applicant? I see several of them here.
If I might briefly, John Gillespie from the Rose Law Group, 7144 East Stetson in Scottsdale, Illinois. Great to see you, mayor and council. Thank you. Just on behalf of the Ivanhoe team, I wanted to say thank you for your consideration of this request, and looking forward to working closely with you on this great economic development project in the city. With me tonight, Pam, Kami Ballard, and Glenn Coats from Ivanhoe, and Pam Hora from Tetra Tech, who's been working on this project, and Hunter Moore as well. So really excited to continue partnering with the city on this good project. We'll take any questions that you might have.
Bob?
Can you tell us again what you're doing for the owls? I wasn't expecting that.
Councilmember Huddleston, I'm surprised that Nancy's not here tonight. So it's a conservation easement, so it's dedicating land that is in a floodplain as an area that will be preserved for the owl.
I don't hear floodplains.
You're not required to do that, are you?
No.
No, that's voluntary. Ivanhoe's offered that.
Thank you. I think that's a, that's a good move. We appreciate it.
She's been in touch with them.
Good.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, anyone else from the public? It's a public hearing, so. Oh, I thought I did. I'm opening the public hearing for item L3. If there is anyone here who would like to speak on this general plan amendment. All right, seeing none, then I'll call for a resolution number, please. Gloria, again, same rules. Brett?
Resolution number 5273.29. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending the city of Casa Grande 2030 general plan adopted by resolution number 5273 by amending the land use designation from neighborhoods to manufacturing and industry on property generally located north of Hila Bend Highway between Montgomery Road and Russell Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5273.29 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right. Item L4, again, in our last and final public hearing on our 2030 general plan amendment. This is resolution number 5273.30. Jaclyn?
Wolf Harvard Investments is requesting a major general plan amendment to amend the land use category from neighborhoods to manufacturing and industry, to men, on approximately 596 acres. This is located south of Hila Bend Highway between Midway Road and Russell Road. And this request amendment will facilitate and accommodate employment uses along the potentially important transportation thoroughfare near Hila Bend Highway and the future corridor of I-11. And the amendment is considered to be compatible with industrial concentration proposed in this area. I also want to show that this is just south of the previous general plan amendment site as well.
It all used to be the same property, wasn't it?
Correct, it's all part of the, was all part of the Legends on general plan, or Legends PAD. So when they come in to develop, we are going to create new P8s for these sites.
Thank you.
Again, here's the general plan review criteria covered in the staff report. Staff finds that the applicant met all the requirements. Regarding public notification efforts outlined by city code and Arizona state statutes, the staff and applicant met all the requirements as well, including the two public hearings for planning and zoning commission. And I also have not received any inquiries or comments regarding this project. At the May 2nd Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission voted 5-0 to forward a recommendation of approval to city council for DSA 240004, major general plan amendment to mend the land use category from neighborhoods to manufacturing and industry on approximately 596 acres located south of Hila Bend Highway between Midway and Russell Road. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions, council? All right, seeing no questions from the council, then I will open the public hearing.
The applicant is here as well, if they, if they want to give me questions.
You sure you want to say anything?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, the other two guys got up, so I felt like I had to as well. I'm Andrew Yancey, an attorney with Bergen Frakes, Smalley and Overholster. For your records, we're 4343 East Camelback Road in Phoenix. Happy to be here representing Wolf Harvard Investments. We do have Amy Weidman and Kaylee Wade, both from Wolf Harvard here as well. Many thanks to Jaclyn for all her work on all the hearings you've heard tonight, in this case in particular. I really don't have anything to add. Looking to do industrial across the highway from the proposed mine, also on a great transportation corridor. Think it's a great property to bring some more employment uses to Casa Grande. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I did open the public hearing, so is there anyone else here who would like to address the council on item L4? All right, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and I'll call for a resolution number, please. Gloria?
Resolution number 5273.30. A resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending the city of Casa Grande 2030 general plan adopted by resolution number 5273 by amending the land use designation from neighborhoods to manufacturing and industry on property generally located south of Hila Bend Highway between Midway Road and Russell Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, they move approval of resolution number 5273.30 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, that concludes most of our business tonight. We do have reports still to go, so Bob, I'm going to start with you.
No reports, sir.
All right, Lisa?
You know, mayor, I just wanted to update everyone. I know there's a lot of questions that come to all of us on the homeless. As the temperature is getting higher and higher, a lot of people are concerned with what's going on, so I just wanted to update as far as the CG Helps homeless coalition, there's still a lot of activity going on, a lot of resources that are available. You know, we still have the Laundry Love twice a month. Each time they have the laundry for this group, there's about 372 loads that are done each time during the, when they have the Laundry Love. So people can find out the schedule at the CG Helps Resource Center. The Faith Alliance is still sponsoring and coordinating the I Help, the Interfaith Homeless Emergency Lodging Program. We are still, two times a week, the numbers are low. And so I just want to make sure everyone knows that this is a resource that the churches still are doing, but there are certain rules that the homeless, the vetting process they have to go through to keep everyone safe. So there, you know, it's not the solution for homeless, but at least it's one, one program that we have here. And we still thank the churches, the seven churches that are participating, all the partners, Laundry Love, the LDS Church, the Seeds of Hope, and the CG Helps Resource Center. So that is still happening now. So, so again, not, not the solution, but it is one, one program. And then, you know, just there's so many behavioral health. The Casa Grande Police Department has been great. You know, we, at the last meeting, you know, our, you know, the PD are looking for grants because we're finding that a lot of the homeless are from our tribal communities. So we're going to try to get some grants from them if we can give them some data and numbers to show, you know, some of the, you know, the tribal members. And so hopefully, we can do that. So it's an active group, and they meet once a month, and there's a lot going on. So, you know, a lot of people ask what's going on, and I know, I know you get it just as much as I do. But, um, but there, there is a lot of activity going on with the homeless. It's just unfortunate, you know, with the temperatures rising. But the CG Helps Resource Center in Peart Park is a cooling station, and so it is open Monday through Friday. The, you know, homeless are coming in, getting water, charging their phones, resting, cooling off. So, and then we're, we're trying to get updated list of all the other cooling stations in the city. So once we get that, I'll make sure to distribute it to everyone. Just update on that.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Lisa. Anthony, no?
Matt? I've got two easy things.
Go for it.
I just wanted to say, neat thing about our community is the drive-through prayer that goes on every day at a different location. So if you're ever driving around and you see people there, like Pastor Edwards over there, it's a great place to go. You can just drive through, get a prayer, and move on.
So. What about, did you tell them about the one?
Ah, that's his story to tell.
But he didn't tell it.
I know.
You have to go back to him.
Yeah, you have to go back to him. That's a good story. And so it's just great. It's neat to have something like that in our community, because all the churches, not just one church, all the churches come together. They move it all around town every week, so that was good. And another thing that I've been hearing a lot lately too, and want to remind everybody, is the See, Click, Fix app. People love it. Everyone's starting to, I mean, people are getting used to it, and a lot of people use it, and it works. People tell me all the time, like, hey, you know, what about this? I go, just put on the app. They go, got taken care of. I go, that's the whole point. So see, click, fix. Remember, download the app.
Thank you, Matt. Donna?
Just a quick kudos to Casa Grande Police Department. We received notification from Larry this week that the Flock technology is really being used a lot, and I guess that on a national basis, I think it was over 70% of our employees are using this technology. And so it's, it's a good use of our money, and it's also safety in our community. So chief, thank you for supporting that program and making sure that our staff are using it.
Yeah, that's good.
That's it.
Jeff?
I have nothing, sir.
Okay. Well, I've got a couple of things. I want to make sure to remind everybody that there's some road closures, on-ramp and off-ramp closures on I-10 on the eastbound lane on-ramp to I-10 from Jimmy Kerr and the exit lane going east, westbound is the north one. And eastbound is the south one. So those two that are coming off Jimmy Kerr, one's going on to Jimmy Kerr, one's coming off Jimmy Kerr, but they're going north towards Casa Grande. Those lanes are closed, and there's one lane in each direction on I-10 from 8:00 at night till 5:00 a.m. for the next two weeks. Two weeks. Goes from tonight through the 28th. So avoid the area. That's my suggestion. You have to go that way. Good luck. I also wanted to kind of throw a shout out to the Art Box Campaign. We did have some finalists in the, in the voting. The winner was Juan Carlos Ruiz with 1,453 votes. And I don't know if you looked at any of these boxes, but his project is on Peart and Cottonwood. And if you go there, there's a QR code you can download on your phone, and the animals will come alive on the box. It's, he's used technology and creativity in the painting in this box. It is amazing. So a big shout out to him. Also Alma Campos had 600 votes. I mean, it was, there were a lot of people participated in. Kind of congratulations to all of them, and thank them also for participating. We also just got May's housing, single-family permitting. We're still, Casa Grande is still up. We're up over 6% over last year. This is through May. So January through May of this year, we have issued 306 single-family permits, building permits. So that's, that's 306 new families. So just FYI. And if anybody's looking for a job, the Chamber is looking for a marketing, the Casa Grande Chamber is looking for a tourism and marketing manager. So if you're interested and know somebody, the pay is decent, 50, call it 56,000 to 70,000 a year. So in Casa Grande, that actually will buy you a few beers. So that's not a bad, not bad pay. And, and anyway, and the Chamber is a fun organization to work for. So if you know anybody, have them check the Chamber's website, because that job is open. The other thing that I wanted to kind of highlight, and this is kind of along the lines of economic development, but just to give you all an example, we did some collection of data over the last five to six years. And if you, if you use the data points that are used in measuring economic development, it demonstrates that Casa Grande has experienced the highest level of development in the past five to six years compared to any similar time range since its incorporation as a city. And we were incorporated in 1915, 14, somewhere around there. So a long time. Not that we were very big back then, but it, we've gone through a tremendous growth in the last six years. As an example, the net assessed value of properties within the city limits has grown by 56%. It's, it's grown from 390 million, 390 million dollars in value. This is property value. So this is businesses, this is homes, everything combined. Today, it's 609 million. So that's a 56% jump in the last five to six years. Average household income has grown by 72%. In 2019, it was 51,000. Today, it's 89,000. So that's a huge jump, and it just shows the improvement in the overall health of our community. Another measure is, is the median age. It's gone from 39 to today, it's 35. So we have younger families also moving to town, which is good. So anyway, just some data points there, some interesting trivia for your, talking around the dinner table tomorrow. All right, that's probably enough. We will be, I will be, me, talking about preserving our future in terms of our roads. You'll be hearing more information on that. There will be an election. We have an election on the 30th of July for the primary, and then we have another one in November. So the first Tuesday in November, which is where all of the propositions will be. And I am being told it's four pages front and back. So do your homework. Take a cheat sheet with you, if you do it live, or do it at home. And then you can take your time and be knowledgeable about all of the propositions, because there are some very important propositions on the ballot. We will have, the county will have a force, Proposition 469, which is a continuation of a tax that you're paying today. It's a TPT tax that's being, you're paying it right now, and it's been in existence for 40 years, and it goes for road maintenance. It really is important for the city of Casa Grande. It's anywhere between 3 to 7 million dollars a year, depending on, on what happens in terms of what we get to improve your roads. And we've redone downtown streets. We did Florence Boulevard. If you liked the way Florence Boulevard turned out, thank you, county tax. That's, that's who paid for it. That's you paid for it. We paid for it, but that's where we got the money to, to make those roads improvements. So they are important. We, we, as a city, and especially Kevin's department, works very hard on monitoring how our roads are. I think if you drive around this county, you'll find, I think, that Casa Grande's streets are probably the best in the county. And I say that with a lot of pride for, for the staff we have here and for our management that we have over here, so. And the council that you have up here. So it's, it's all a group effort, and I just thought that was worthwhile throwing out there since. So it's, it's all a group effort, and just thought that was worthwhile throwing out there, since I'm way under the under, over. Anyway. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight, and appreciate your participation, meaning a journey.
What time do you think it's gonna be over, 8:30?
I said 8:30, I was wrong.